Welcome and good evening and happy holidays to everybody. To the City of Shakopee City Council Meeting for December 18th, 2018. If we could call the roll, please?
Councilmember Luce.
Here.
Councilmember Lehman.
Here.
Mayor Mars.
Here.
Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
Councilmember Mokel.
Here.
Thank you. Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving ahead then to number 3A, Mr. Reynolds.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have the Show-Off Shakopee Award winners and John is going to be here to talk about them and their photographs and then hopefully tell us a little bit about the process.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The annual Show-Off Shakopee Photo Contest features some of the best photographers in Shakopee and imagery that captures the beauty of our community. The photos are taken by residents and are submitted to the Communications Department in three different categories: activities and events, landscapes and nature, and people, pets, and families. This year, we had over 60 entries from 34 different photographers. First off, just let me take a quick second to thank a few people on staff for their hard work with this. First, Kristen Dorn, who, as you might know, is back from maternity leave. She did a lot to get this all organized in the beginning, so this is really her project, but I just stepped in to help out at the end. And then I want to thank Joyce Sutton, who received all of the submissions and organized judging. And then, of course, our panel of judges, which was made up of various members of the staff. So can I get anybody that is a winner to step forward, please? Come on forward. Yep. Our first winner this evening could not make it, but this is her photo. Fight, Fight, Fight for Shaco High, and that was the winner for the Events and Activities category. Next, we had Landscapes and Nature, and the photo is Sunset Stroll on the Old Bridge by Betsy Stafford Larkin.
Now, I heard that that was the Loch Ness Monster that was on the river there. Is that correct?
Or a boat.
Or a boat. Our next photo in the People, Pets, and Families category is Sister Walk, and that was by Christopher Anderson right over here. And then, sorry, I didn't mention this part. Each winner in the different categories gets a $50 prize, and then our overall winner gets a $100 prize. And this is Midnight Crossing by Joseph, is it Yetman? Is it? Okay, perfect.
I thought that was my check over there. Sorry.
No. You just get a regular check.
Oh, thank you. Oh, thanks a lot.
So, we're going to have council come down and we're going to get a photo with all of our winners, if you would please. All right. Thank you. Congratulations to the winners. I just want to add one last thing. As everybody's sitting down, you're going to be seeing these photos hanging over next door at City Hall. I believe there's also a display at the Public Library right now. And then, of course, you're going to see some of these on Facebook, on our website, and throughout the city. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. I just would like to say this photo contest has been going on for several years, and I feel I've looked at the pictures and seen the winners, and actually, all of them, and it really brings out what's best in our community. The pictures highlight some of our features in our community and history, and a lot of them are buildings or the train, but there are some pictures with people in it, with our residents. And I just really, I think the pictures are powerful of our community, and every year, I'm amazed. So hats off to the award winners this year and keep those photos coming.
I think the entries have grown over the years, too.
60, did he say?
Yes. It's becoming more popular.
Wow. That's great. Thanks again and congratulations. Moving ahead then to 3B, Michael.
Mayor and Council, as many of you know, several individuals in our community have been out fundraising for the Reverend Pond statue, and tonight, we're here to acknowledge some of those and the two largest gifts, one from the Dorn Company and one from Canterbury.
Good. Bring up the Reverend Pond Committee members. And if the committee would like to say a couple things, we do have representatives from a couple of the big presentations tonight.
We want to thank Dorn and Canterbury for their donations to the Reverend Pond statue fundraiser. It's a great project, and we are hoping to continue fundraising, so if anybody is interested in donating funds, we need a lot more. So please contact the city and we'll make sure that your donation is put to good use. Thank you.
Well, great. If Canterbury would like to come forward and Dorn?
Sure. Mayor Mars, Council, City staff, we just wanted to say thank you on behalf of the Dorn Companies for your continued leadership and dedication to public art in particular. Dorn Companies, we've always believed in public art and private art as a great tool to help bring cities growth and economic prosperity, and we think this is a great example of your stewardship here at the city. And we continue to look forward to working here. As we know, we broke ground on our project and was kickoff of the Canterbury Commons Project, so we're excited about that. And we look forward to working with you all again and those in the community to continue to make this a great place to work, play, and our favorite part is live. So, thanks again.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'll be real brief. I want to thank the committee, the ladies here are doing a great job raising money for a great cause, and at Canterbury, we've tried to, whenever possible, help out with the efforts in the community, so we're just pleased and proud to be part of this. And again, hopefully, we'll be able to get this across the finish line soon and see this come to fruition. It'll be a nice addition to the downtown area.
Well, thank you both for your generous donation, and Reverend Pond, we can raise the rest of the money and pair that with Chief Shakopee and draw that history piece right to our downtown will be great, and thank you for your generous contributions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. If we can get a photo.
Come on, you guys got to get up for the picture.
And Mayor and Council members, as you return to the dais, I'd remind you that we need a motion to accept this donation, please, these donations. Anybody?
Motion to accept the donations for the statue of Reverend Pond.
I have a second from Counselor Lehman for the discussion. Counselor Lehman?
Do we know what the total end amount needed to fulfill the project?
We are, Michael?
Mayor and Council, so the actual cost of the statues on the agenda tonight is $115,000. We have about $56,000, $57,000 raised to date, and we're working on the balance.
Other discussion? Discussion, discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. Thanks again. Moving ahead to item number four then, approval of the agenda. Are there any changes, corrections, Mr. Reynolds?
The only change, Mr. Mayor, members of council, will be on the consent agenda, and staff will be pulling 5A6 off of consent.
5A6 off of consent?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, I think there was a change that, in a memo to...
For the dates of the meeting?
Yeah, the dates of the January meetings. So, that change was sent out to us.
For 5A10?
Yeah, are we just going to recognize that the updated version, you sent that to us, the dates?
Laurie?
Mayor and Council, yes, there was a wrong resolution attached to the original memo, so the corrected resolution was attached. That was the update.
Okay.
So it is actually part of the official agenda.
Very good. All right.
Counselor Whiting?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as modified, I guess.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the modified regular agenda. Discussion, 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 all in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. Moving ahead to consent business, and please note that 5A6 has already been removed. Counselor Luce?
5B4 off.
Counselor Lehman? All right. So, Counselor Lehman?
Motion to approve the consent agenda as modified.
Okay. I have a motion and a second by Counselor Luce. Before we vote on the consent agenda, we will read the modified consent agenda into the public record. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. These are the consent agenda items as modified for December 4th of 2018. 5A1 approves the minutes of the December 4th, 2018, meeting. 5A2 adopts Resolution Number R2018-TAC 139, which accepts gifts and donations received from outside organizations. 5A3 adopts Resolution Number 2018-TAC 147, which defers special assessment payments for a specific property within the 2018 Street Reconstruction Project, Project Number CIF 18-TAC 003. 5A4 adopts Resolution Number R2018-TAC 144, which establishes polling places for each precinct. 5A5 approves listed tobacco licenses for 2019. 5A7 approves applications for taxicab business licenses for 2019. 5A9 adopts Resolutions Numbers R2018-TAC 141, R2018-TAC 142, R2018-TAC 143, which approves the 2018 property tax levy collectible in 2019, which, by the way, is a tax cut, the 2019 budget, and the 2019 debt service cancellation specific to certain issuances. 5A10 adopts Resolution Number R2018-TAC 145, which changes the January meetings from January 2nd and 15, 2019, to January 8th and 22nd, 2019. Once again, our next meetings in January will be on the 8th and the 22nd of January. 5B1 adopts Resolution Numbers R2018-TAC 138, 8, which sets a public hearing date to consider the vacation of a 25-foot-wide public utility easement along the previously vacated Fuller Street between 4th and 5th Avenues. 5B2 adopts Resolution Number R2018-TAC 148, which adopts a summary of ordinance number OR2018-TAC 017. 5B3 adopts Resolution Number R2018-TAC 137, which sets the public hearing date to consider the vacation of public drainage and utility easements originally dedicated with Outlot A, Checkered Flag Edition. 5B5 requests the continuance to the January 22nd meeting to further discuss a policy for incentives and recruitments for restaurants. 5C1 accepts work for the Mill Pond Repair Project, Project STS-TAC 18-TAC 005, and authorizes final payment of $7,916.64. And 5C2 accepts work for the 2015 sanitary sewer lateral pipe rehabilitation project, 2015-TAC 4, and authorizes a final payment of $96,535.18.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. I have a motion on the table for the modified consent, and a second. The modified consent has been read into the public record. There would be no further discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. Thank you very much. Item number six. Now, I'd like to call on any resident that would like to come forward on an item not on the agenda. Please come forward and state your name and address to the record on an item not on the Welcome and happy holidays.
Well, thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor, members of the Shakopee City Council. My name is Frank Boiles. I'm Prior Lake City Manager. I've been fortunate enough to be in that position for going on 26 years now, folks, and I will be retiring, as we indicated before we went on camera, March 1st, 2019. The new city manager, we already know his name. His name is Michael Plant. Michael is the county administrator of Wabashaw County, so he'll be coming down, actually assuming that position, in February 7th, 2019. But that's not why I'm here. That was just for information purposes. As you know, Gary Shelton, Scott County Administrator, is also retiring. He's retiring at the end of this year. So Gary and I decided we should not go out quietly. We should have our, you know, see it, see it next time tour. And so we wanted to stop by each and every township and certainly City Council and provide two messages. The first message is a very, very simple one. It's a heartfelt thank you to each of you folks, because really, it is the elected officials that are the genius in our local government system. Now, administrators, we rarely say, you know, that council members are geniuses, but the fact of the matter is, this system is such that it really does depend on you, you people who leave your careers for whatever period of time, your families, any other interest that you have. You set that aside, and what you do instead is you focus on the goodness and making your community better. How many people do that? Not a whole lot, guys. And I know it's not a love fest, because I've been in this long enough to know that generally, for every person you've made happy, you've probably made another one not too happy. And so you do what you can to make your community the best it can possibly be. And I thank you. Gary Shelton thanks you as well. By the way, he could not be here tonight. Normally, you'd have both of us. The second thing is Scott County Association for Leadership and Efficiency. And you folks, of course, know what that is, but for folks who are in the audience, it really is a conglomeration of every city, every township, every school district, and then a whole host of other public entities bound together by a commitment to work together. We started this in 2003. We did not want to be another level of government. What we wanted to do is find out how, by working together, by overcoming these false little segments and geographic areas, to really provide services through cooperation. Could we really loan equipment to one another without some longstanding contract? Yeah, we sure can. We're doing it pretty often. Could we have a joint training facility that we could all benefit from by using an old, used-up building fundamentally? Yeah, we can. We have. Can we have a joint public safety answering facility where we all cooperate and save money in the process? Yes. Can we have a joint prosecution service that we all share in? Yes, we can. How many counties do you figure that happens around the metro area and the state? I suspect it's more than I know, but I'm sure proud of what we've done to work together to provide better services, more economical services. The key point that I have to make, though, is that this is going to take our continuing attention. We change over every year. Chair Mars was our chair of scale just a few years ago, and that's the way scale evolves. But the key is, we have to have people that continue to be committed to that cooperation. And so that's what Gary and I are doing, is going around thanking you for your participation in scale and urging you, urging you to continue that participation, continue that commitment, because sometimes we forget there's a very essential thing there that we have and so many others don't. We think of how can we do things together first, not second, and that makes all the difference. I'm available for any questions, and I thank you for everything you do, both as council members and as members of scale.
Thank you, Frank, for being here, and thank you for your service to Prior Lake and Scott County, and I appreciate your valuable words. Further comment with Counselor Whiting?
Yes, I'd like to thank you for your service in Prior Lake and have a great retirement. And being a part of scale in the past, I understand that it is a dynamic that doesn't happen in most communities, and I'd like to see it grow, like to see it better, and kind of hone itself a little more so that it can be better than it already is. So I'm one of them.
Wonderful.
Counselor Lehman?
Mr. Boiles, we go back probably 18 years of them, 20-some years that you've served in Prior Lake, so it's been a pleasure serving with you. I hope you enjoy your retirement and find something fun to do and enjoy it well. Thanks for your service.
Mr. Mayor, normally, I don't participate in these discussions, but Frank and I go back before his 26 years at Prior Lake, a long time ago. Great, had a great relationship with him, and he looks exactly the same now as he did 30 years ago.
Thank you all very much.
I just wanted to say thank you, too, Frank. Thank you for your service. Thanks.
Counselor Luce?
Yeah, I didn't have much chance to deal with Frank in too many arenas, but the few times I did, it was very professional, and I thank you for all your service.
Thank you for your kind words about scale. It's an important organization. It's been around a long time in Scott County. We are a member and we are a player in that. The goodwill that is undertaken there is great, and the collaborative support is always important. Thank you very much.
Thank you, folks. Have a good evening.
Anybody else would like to come forward and make comment on an item not on the agenda? Not on the agenda, please come forward. Seeing none, we will move ahead then to our business that was removed from consent. 5A8, Matt?
5A6 was removed.
5A6. Oh, Mr. Mayor.
5A6.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had removed this because our opinion as staff has not changed in regards to Exile Pond, but unfortunately, our recommendation to council in regards to Pond Exchange LLC has changed. Based upon multiple issues, which we can certainly get into, but I don't think is necessary, at this point, we would not recommend reapproving the business license for Pond Exchange LLC. As you can see, we had a caveat on this, even with this particular item, that any late invoices will bring late fees and possible license suspension or revocation. Suffice it to say, we had more issues in regards to that establishment and would recommend that it not be approved for a business license.
Okay. Thanks for that update. So, we could discuss here at council, is the representative here would like to come forward and make comment on this? Please state your name and address, and are you from Pond Exchange LLC?
I am, sir. Good evening, Mayor. My name is Doug English. I've been working for the Pond Exchange for 12 and a half years. We've been in business for, I think, 17 years in the city of Shakopee. I spoke to the owner of the business about your guys' concerns, and he would like me to let you guys know that we are very sorry for inattentiveness to paying the APS fees, and we will be more attentive in the future. I also spoke to Lori earlier, and she, about possibly prepaying these fees for the year, and she said that the finance department was okay with that, as well as the owner is okay with that. So, I guess I'm motioning to keep the license, because as of a letter that was received from Lori, we were motioning to keep it with possibility that, you know, if we were late on fees, that there would be a late fee or suspension or removal of our license. But we sometimes have upwards of almost 200,000 in loans that we, you know, use to stimulate the local economy, and I'd like to continue to do so and continue to do work in the city. I'm a Shakopee native, as well as my partner at the Pond Exchange, so I appreciate you guys listening to me, so.
Mr. Johnson?
Mr. Mayor and Council, I think we should clarify whether or not the transaction fees are still delinquent as of today.
As of today, they are not delinquent. We had an issue with a check that did not clear, but as of today, this morning, those fees were then paid.
In every, is it okay if I speak? Every notice we've had in the past that has always stated that if fees weren't current at the time of license renewal, that there would be a move to either suspend or remove our license, in which, by the seat of our pants today, which I apologize, I do the best I can managing the finance there. The owner does live out of state, but we were able to pay him today last minute, and, you know, moving forward, we would like to possibly do a prepayment for the year to alleviate any concerns on any late payments there, so.
Okay. So, Mr. Reynolds, is everything in order, but you're still recommending denial of their application? Is that correct?
We have a longstanding history of... We have a longstanding history of, on average, 55 days past the 30 days that normally is given to pawn shops to deliver their fees. Their average is 55 days in arrears. So staff took a hard look at this and then based upon the last minute issues that we had, you know, this, there needed to be a real look at this.
Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, I got a question. If, if you're proposing to prepay for the year upfront, I'm asking myself if they, if you can't pay as they're due, how can you pay in advance?
It's a, excuse me, it's a tricky situation because the owner does live out of state. So everything that I do has to be confirmed through that, through him, which a lot of times he expects me to use cash flow from the business to pay the bills here, which sometimes can, you know, might, might be everything that we have to work with for the day or. But he did state that he would be willing to, you know, make those funds available at the beginning of the year. You know, we have an average of about 1,000 a month, I think, on those payments. So I proposed to him that he made 12,000 available to prepay you guys at the beginning of the year and he obliged, so.
And for the record, you are not the owner, right?
I'm not. I manage the business.
You're just an employee, is that correct?
At this location.
At this location, okay.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
Counselor Lehman?
Second question is, do we know what the average annual amount is based on past history?
Darren?
Mr. Mayor, council members, it is about $1,000 a month is what the transaction fees are on average.
Counselor Whiting?
You know, I, we put these rules in place because it is important that the fees are paid because there is a lot of work at the pleats department looking through some of these items. I'm not excited about revoking a business's license, but I would like to see, these are annual licenses, correct?
Yes, sir.
Is there a way we could do a probationary license or 90-day something?
Mr. Thompson?
Mr. Mayor, I was counsel. The answer is yes. You have implied authority to grant it for a shorter period of time. And I certainly understand staff's concern on this. It's been going on and off. So yeah, you have, you could do one of two things. You could issue it for a short period of time, let's say three months, and, and come back and see how it goes. You could issue it on condition that they prepay their transaction fees by a certain date in, in 2019. There are other, I mean, there are ways to accomplish that. And if they don't do it, the code clearly gives the authority to suspend and, and/or revoke the license after, after notice and hearing.
Mayor, what I'm going to propose, Mr. Thompson, please correct me if, if I'm overstepping, but what I would propose is that we approve the license contingent on receiving the 12,000 in, in advance by January 31 of 2019. And if that doesn't happen, then, then suspension would take place. The gentleman representing this location has offered that as a solution. So this is not something that I'm making up. This is what you proposed.
Correct, yeah.
So, and I'm comfortable with that.
This is a transactional percentage of the fee is based off that and averages 1,000?
So? Oh, yes, Mr. Mayor. It's a per transaction fee. I believe it's a dollar 50 per trans, per transaction that we get billed from the city of Minneapolis. We turn around and pay it and then we bill it out to the appropriate.
It's a pass through?
Are you, Mayor, are you familiar, are you familiar with automated property systems, what the fee is for?
Not as much as I should, maybe.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I know there's a tracking system.
It's basically a police database that we pay the fee for, for, for police to look for confiscated, you know, items to confiscate and stuff like that. Every, every pawn shop in the state has to submit their reports to that every day, so.
Any other questions of the applicant?
Well, Mayor, the intent of my motion would, is that if, if their transactions are less than, then we would reimburse the difference.
Or roll it over to next year's.
Or roll it over, whichever.
I would second your motion.
All right. Counselor Lewis?
Agree with Counselor, Counselor Lehman, with the exception that if they miss their date, it's a drop dead date. They lose their license automatically.
That's, that was part of the motion. It would be suspended at, at January 31, 2019, if it's not received.
Spelled out exactly that. It's no ifs, ands, or buts.
Yep.
Darren?
Mr. Mayor, council members, and I should note that although those past due invoices were cleared up today, there is another invoice that's due like right, right, January 3rd or 4th as well, too, that will need to be paid for, that we invoiced, you know, the first part of December, that would be part of that, you know, would be due as well, too, at, at the beginning of January. So there's.
It's due in January for December.
Do you know how much that is?
That's about 1,000, $1,074.
We could add it as an amendment.
Counselor Lehman, motion maker.
Mayor, I'd like to modify my motion if I may. So add to the motion that the, our billing current up to January 31 is also paid. So that would mean that they would act, they would have to pay the 1,074. And then by the 31st of January of 2019, they're going to give you, give 12 grand for the year in advance for the whole year.
I accept that.
It's accepted by the second. So the date of the smaller amount, the thousand for the December is due, paid, needs to be paid in full in early January on the regular due date.
They received it and they're, they're allocated, is it 30 days to pay?
From our billing date, we give 30 days to pay. So when we send out the notices, it's 30 days to pay.
And you received it when?
I'm sorry, the last invoice? Is that your, we build that out, we dropped it in the mail on December 4th.
Okay.
So it's due.
January 4th.
Or January 3rd.
Well, you got how many holidays in there? So it's actually going to be?
That's 30, it just goes 30 days. It doesn't.
30 days regardless of holiday.
Okay. So you have to make good on that one, too?
Yeah, I'll see to it.
Before, that one's due on the 4th.
The 3rd or 4th of January, yeah.
Right.
Right.
Counselor Mokel?
We can't forget about Excel Pawn because they're not part of this.
Let's separate them here.
Good, good catch.
Two motions. Just to act on this one, then we can act on Excel.
So this will be only for the motion. I want to speak for the motion maker for Pawn Ex- L- L- C.
Pawn XL, correct.
Pawn Exchange.
Pawn Exchange.
Yep.
LLC.
Mr. Mayor, just so we're clear, the, the motion is that the license for 2019 be approved with two conditions. One, that they timely pay the December 4th, 2018 invoice and that they prepay the estimated amount of transaction fees for 2019 and the amount of $12,000 by January 31, 2019.
Correct.
Everybody square on this?
And the applicant is, is fine with the, at least you're speaking here on behalf of the licensee and you're, you're fine with those conditions.
Correct. I'm the one who actually suggested those to him, so. And yeah, you were right on with the date that I was going to suggest as well, so.
Okay.
Yep.
And both these are drop dead dates?
Yes, or suspension would ensue. And I have not spoken with this gentleman prior to, right here, now.
Motion on the table, second. Further discussion? Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members.
Next one. Counselor Mokel?
I'm making a motion to approve the pawn shop, um, business license for Excel Pawn Inc., DBA, Excel Pawn and Jewelry.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Lewis. And this application and fees is all up to date on this one, right?
Yes, sir.
Got that. Discussion? 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 All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, now we will move to, Matt, 5A8?
Mayor, I took it off so I could vote against it, just to be consistent.
All right. Counselor, do you want to, now, Counselor Whiting?
I make a motion to adopt resolution number R2018-140 approving the EDA special benefit levy of $350,000 pursuant to Minnesota statute 469.033 subdivision 6.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion. This is for the EDA portion of the levy, set at $350,000 per year. Further discussion? 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 All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes three to two. Thank you. Now we will move to item 5B4. Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, the reason I took this off, in the past, I thought we set up a guideline of 50% of the money had to be raised prior to going forward in the city, covering the difference until it's been raised. We did that with, did that with the playground and I think we should do the same here. They're short by a few thousand dollars, but I still think it, we should keep, keep it the same as we've done in the past.
Okay, well, this is like letting the contract, but, and it's not going to be installed tomorrow. But Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, I know the memo says 50,000, but they actually have 56 and the total is 115, so they're just shy of the half.
No, I said it was a couple thousand.
Yeah, it's pretty close. I, they'll probably have it before.
But how long have they been working on this?
For a while.
You know, that's not a lot of money in the amount of time that they've done it, especially considering two checks for 25,000 were the bulk of their donations. So I think they've got a lot of work to do and I just hate to see the city be on the hook for the difference if they fail to reach their goal.
Well, you know certainly how fundraising goes and it's a, a tough thing. And here we are, it's the holiday season. So I think the committee has actually made some good progress and they're going to continue to work at it. Counselor Lewis?
The holiday season has nothing to do with it. You know, they've been working on this for what, nine months?
Good.
Yeah, and in nine months, we completely built, removed and paid for the playground. So, I mean, it's.
Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, do we have information about this out in public and website and stuff like that? I heard tonight that to make a donation, you could, you could make that at City Hall. And in, in the past, I've seen it in, on social media stuff. So I'm not sure that we're really clear to the public on where these donations can be made.
I think that's a good point, Counselor Lehman. And we're getting ready to do another push on this at the beginning of the year. Now that we have a sizable portion of it, I think that we're going to get some real traction on this. We have some other places that we're talking to. Obviously, the ladies have been doing the fundraising, also have been working on that as well. I'm, I'm confident that, you know, we're at the point where we can let this contract and then get the sculptor to start doing the full-size clay and then we can move forward. But we will get that out in the new year. We'll make another push and we'll, we'll make that happen.
Counselor Lehman?
Last comment, Mayor. I would like to defer to Counselor Whiting on this a little bit because I think there might be, it'd be a, a good possibility of poss, possible funds from the, there's two of them, Historic and.
Heritage.
Heritage.
Well, there's not a lot of funds with the Heritage Society, but they're, they're raising money for some of the other projects at Memorial Park right now, so it's, they're taking.
The Heritage or the Historic?
The Heritage Society.
Can we talk to the Historical?
I think they could definitely present to them, the, the County Historical Society. They don't have a lot of money either, but it's definitely something that could be talked to.
We're not looking for a lot. We're only looking for like 50 grand.
Yeah, so, so is Heritage Society, yeah.
They're looking for 50 grand.
Every little bit adds up.
Mr. Reynolds?
And the last thing I would say, that the city of Savage was actually successful getting money from the state for a statue of a horse. So, you know, Reverend Pond actually did more than run around a track. I don't know, maybe we can talk to our representatives and, and look at that.
Be dishing Dan Patch now.
No, I'm not, I'm not ditching Dan Patch. I'm just saying he was a horse. So maybe we can also look at that avenue as well.
Counselor Mokel?
I have no problem approving this. I, I think that we've made good traction and once you get to that halfway point, I think that's just, it starts looking like it's coming to fruition. So I'm going to make a motion to approve contract with JK Designs of the amount of 115,000.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? 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 All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one. Thank you very much. Moving ahead then to entertain a motion to recess to the EDA.
Sub move.
Okay. I have a motion and a second by Counselor Mokel. Further discussion? Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. We are adjourned to the EDA. President?
Thank you, Mayor. We'll call the Shakopee Economic Development Authority meeting to order for December 18, 2018. Secretary, please note the role. Everybody should have an agenda and a packet in front of you and a motion to approve the agenda would be in order. Ms. Mokel?
I'll second that, Mr. President.
A discussion on the agenda. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Consent agenda tonight includes one item, EDA minutes. Mr. Whiting?
Motion to approve the consent business?
Second one, Mr. Mars.
Second.
Get that, Mr. Whiting made the motion. Mars made a second. Okay, had two at the same time. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. General business for a contract for private development with enclave and its assigns. Mr. Kersky?
Mr. President, board members, we're getting down to the last pieces on this project. The developer's here tonight with his team. Kennedy and Graven have created for you a contract for private development that would allow them to redevelop the site. The city would, currently would have two notes, the original $300,000 note of which we've spent down about 264,000. They will reimburse us 12,000. So it'll be around 250,000 accruing at 4%. There would be a separate note to the developer for about 2.1 million dollars that would be guaranteed by the TIF revenue. If it falls short, the developer would be required to make that up. I think in discussions with our financial advisor and with the city's attorneys, everyone seems pretty comfortable with this. It does provide a better return to the city than we currently get in most of our investments. I know Councilmember Lewis suggested this a while ago and we looked at it and thought it was a pretty good idea to move the project forward. As part of the contract for private development, they will be paying 70% of the cost of the adjacent alley. The rest of the cost of the alley, the 30% would be assessed to the surrounding property owners. They would also pay for the foundation removal, the asbestos that's attached to that foundation, pay for building the foundation walls to hold up the sidewalks and streets and the railway, build kind of the lower level of the garage with the deck, and then also do the street improvements on Second and on Home Street.
Questions of staff. Mr. Mars?
Mr. President, Michael, I'm looking at Article 6, Section 61, and I read this as we're the authority and we, we would retain the right to sue if things don't work out. Is that correct?
Mr. President, board members, that's correct. So the city still has all of its rights. So we talk through kind of what would happen. So for instance, should the developer finish the project and then default on its mortgage? Typically found even through the Great Recession that occurred recently, mortgage holders pay the taxes because they don't want to lose the property. This is a 12 or 13 million dollar project and they would not want to lose the project over the property taxes. Should they default on that and the bank not pay it, we would then foreclose on the project for the property taxes and the EDA would basically own a, a project for the cost of the property taxes.
And then my follow-up question, Mr. President, on the interest rate would be 3%, right?
Mr. President and board members, that's correct.
All right. Thank you.
The clarification, that 3% is on the 2.1 million, the.
4% is on the up to 300,000. We've only spent, when, when their money comes in, we'll be down to, I think, 250,000. So that would be at 4%.
Mr. Lewis?
What would the standard TIF loan run them right now?
If they, Mr. President, board members, if they went to a bank or?
Correct.
You'll have to ask the developer, but it depends on what their creditworthiness and how much collateral they're putting up. But probably, depending on what happens with the feds tomorrow, probably 4% to 5%. So what this would do is it accelerates the prepayments. So we've run it out at 25 years, but we all know inflation will occur. The project will go up in value at 3%. It'll accelerate it. We'll probably see this paid off instead of the 25 years, probably in 13 to 15 years.
Questions of staff? The 2.1 interfund. The two-point-one interfund loan, what fund is that coming from?
Mr. President, commission members, that'll likely come from the sanitary sewer fund, or not sanitary sewer, but storm drainage fund, I'm sorry. Luce?
How much is in that fund, do you know offhand?
There's probably about, probably about twelve, thirteen million dollars in cash. There's obviously CIP, CIP projects coming down the line on that end of it for that fund as well, too, but it should be able to support that interfund loan. And we do have the flexibility to move it between funds if we need to as well, too, so.
I asked last time we did an interfund loan if we could get a list of the various interfund loans that we have outstanding. The answer was yes, we'll get that to you. I haven't seen that, so I'll ask again. It fell through the cracks. What's the wishes of the body?
Do you like to, have any questions of the developer?
Sure. The developer, please step forward and welcome.
Thank you, Austin Morris, Enclave Development. Be happy to answer any questions. Extremely excited to do this project out of all the projects we have. This one brings great passion and excitement. It'll be a really, a legacy project for us and something we'd like to own and operate long-term, and we'll take extremely good care to ensure it's a wonderful asset downtown.
Mr. Luce, you had your hand up?
Have you checked what the bank rate would be?
Bank rates today on, for a TIF financing would probably be four-point-eight-five percent. It depends on if it's variable fix, so somewhere around there.
And possibly tomorrow, that's going to increase by a percentage, so.
Yeah, well, quarter, yeah.
Question, the two-point-one million is going to be used for one purpose, but there's obviously other dollars involved in building the structures.
Yes.
Okay, so is, are those dollars going to be privately found and leveraged, and then how is that, how is that going to, or is that going to be a TIF portion of it?
Are you, are you talking the general financing of the entire project in excess of the TIF amount?
So, Mr. President and board members, so they're very specific, and it's reimbursable, so until they spend the money, they won't get reimbursed. He can explain the other tranches of financing that they have in the project to pay for the building and what equity they're putting in.
So, my understanding of the TIF would be essentially submitting an invoice and having it verified by city staff, probably building inspector, verifying the amount, verifying the work performed, and that it's done to the satisfaction of the city, and then remitting payment for that work. And then, after the TIF funds are used up, then any invoices above and beyond the amount to accomplish the goals of the TIF, which is the parking structure essentially, and the remediation of asbestos, removal of the foundation, shoring, et cetera. Once we use all that up, which we will, utilizing TIF funds, anything in excess of that is our cost. So, from a financing perspective, on projects typically, we do twenty-five to thirty percent cash down from us and our partners, and the balance would be first mortgage financing, likely from a local institution, community bank, or somebody in the Twin Cities familiar with a project like this. We like to work in a relationship banking environment, so I'd be happy to answer anything else.
Any questions, Mr. Whiting?
We're excited to have this project going forward. Really excited to kind of pay attention on how some of the engineering works when they're taking out the wall that holds the train back and putting up a new one. I don't know how that works, but I won't ask that of you, but...
Thank you. You can ask Ben.
Okay, well, you do have a guy who knows that, okay. Just don't want any trains falling into any holes, so.
That'd be bad.
Okay, good, so, but thank you, appreciate this moving forward, and we're looking forward to it. Well, thank you so much.
Mr. Mars?
Mr. President, I'll offer Resolution E two-zero-one-eight-two-eight, approving a contract for private development for the Enclave Development LLC for the old City Hall site.
Ms. Mokel? Second. Motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? Mr. Mars?
We've worked long and hard on this project, and actually, several years ago, it was a goal of council to do some redevelopment in downtown, and I think we're taking another step closer here on this, to turn that old City Hall lot around in roughly a year plus. You know, some communities, when I talk around the metro area, and they got empty holes in their city, and things aren't getting done, so I think this is great, and it expands the livability of our community. And I think, you know, Councillor Luce worked on this and actually turned this around from a normal TIF to have the city more involved at a, at a interest rate that actually benefits the city, so I thought that was good.
Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Myself. Motion passes four to one.
I voted no, you?
I did. Item four-B, interfund loan resolution for the former City Hall site. Mr. Kersky?
Mr. President, board members, this is just basically approving the loan that's in the agreement. There's another item on the city council agenda, approving the city council doing the interfund loan. This is just a requirement by our attorneys.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mars?
Michael, I have a question. So, I just want to make sure, Mr. President, that we've already expended funds here, right?
Yes, sir.
And with the interfund loan, and we're counting for the, we're going to get paid back of the funds that we've already expenditures, right?
So, Mr. President and board members, what will happen is, what this is doing is, you already have one interfund loan over here at four percent, you'll have a new loan at three percent, they'll be combined into one note with two separate interest rates, so we'll get reimbursed kind of in two trains. One will be for the two-fifty, one will be for the two-point-one million, one at four percent, one at three percent.
Questions? Motion would be in order? Mr. Whiting?
Make a motion to approve Resolution number E two-zero-one-eight-zero-two-seven, amending and restating Resolution number seventeen-three, and authorizing interfund loan for advance of certain costs in connection with tax increment District Number Twenty for the redevelopment of the old City Hall site.
Second to the motion, Ms. Mokel? Discussion on the motion? Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Myself. Passes four to one. There's no reports, Ms. Mokel?
Make a motion to adjourn to January eighth, 2019 at seven P.M.
Motion by Ms. Mokel, second by Mr. Luce. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Back over to you, Mayor.
We'll reconvene this City Shakopee City Council meeting for December eighteenth, 2018, and we, I think, are on ten-A-one, which is the monthly financial review. Darren, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Before each night is the November financial report for the city's general fund. I'm happy to report that financial position continues to be favorable for this, for this year, and our trends are all positive at the moment, and should continue through the end of the year. As you can see, looking at our revenues, they're at about seventy-two percent. That obviously doesn't include their second-half taxes that we actually received on December second or third, whatever the day that Monday was of this month, and that shored up then our revenues at that point in time. You can see our licenses and permits are at one-hundred-and-forty-five percent of what we had originally budgeted for the year, so obviously strong permits throughout the, throughout the entire year, and as we've seen with some developments lately, those will continue into 2019. Charges for services are up as well, too, they're over a hundred percent, excuse me. Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
Can you kind of help us understand what drives the charges for service, because I had that highlighted?
Yes, what drives the charges for services is a lot of our recreation fees, anything that you pay for a service, so that's recreation fees, our revenue sharing with Spock is in there. We have, like, private duty, a lot of private duty overtime with the police department, those types of things that were, where people are paying for a service that we're providing to them on that end of it, so. And then again, the miscellaneous revenue, a lot of that is interest revenue. We've seen interest rates increase quite substantially this year, so we're actually seeing some return on our investments, which is, which is nice to see in this environment, so.
Investments is in there?
I'm sorry, excuse me?
Investment income is in there?
Investment income is in the miscellaneous, miscellaneous revenue line. So, looking over at your expenditures, to date, you're at eighty-six percent, and if we're looking at November as a target, so that we're eleven-twelfth of the way through the year, so that'd be about ninety-two percent. So, we're sitting at about eighty-six percent, so we're about six percent below that target for the end of the year. So, we should be sitting okay as we come into the end of the year. Usually, it takes a while to close out the end of the year, when we get to December thirty-first, it's not the end of the year. There's lots of bills you have to pay that get coded back to this fiscal year, so. There are a couple departments, the mayor and council budget is sitting at ninety-nine percent, that's going to go over the original budget. We did have some, some things we didn't account for in the original 2018 budget, and that was related to some part-time recording secretaries for some of the boards and commissions and such like that, so there's a few thousand dollars there that we didn't account for in the original budget, that was accounted for in a different department. We have made that change in the revised 2018 budget that you approved earlier tonight, so when we get those revised budgets input into the system, we'll reflect that in future reports and such, so. The same is true for engineering. Kind of touched bases on that in our, in the memo a little bit, is that we've had a lot of private development going on, and there's been a lot of costs required from the engineering department to pay for some of this stuff, but it's offset by, the charges for services is another line item in there for some of the private engineering costs that are required as part of private development and such as well, too, so. Other than that, your expenditures in the general fund are sitting well, and I expect that to continue throughout the remainder of the year, so. Switching over to the community center and ICE Arena. Let me get this a little bit bigger here so you can see it. If we look at the ICE Arena revenues, they're about seventeen-thousand-six-hundred dollars less than they were this time last year. Looked into that a little bit more, and there was a billing to the school district for their first half of their ICE rental. Last year in 2017, we billed that in November. This year, we didn't bill it until December, so actually, it's, it'll be a wash, or actually we'll be, from a revenue standpoint, we'll be sitting back in a favorable position with increased revenues over last year at this point in time.
That'll be booked as a two thousand and eighteen revenue, though.
It'll be booked as a revenue in 2018, it's just that we didn't send the bill out until December, so it's just a timing difference at this point in time, so. And if you look at their expenditure line item, or expenditures on the ICE Arena, between the two categories of wages and operating expenditures, there, they're sitting at about eighty-five percent, so if we look at that ninety-two percent target for the November thirtieth timeframe, they're sitting in a good position there as well, too.
What is driving the, on the expenditure aspect, the operating expenditures from the budget of, you know, I'm showing that it was eight-fifty-four, and now we're currently sitting at seven-sixty-eight, obviously, do you think we're going to still be under our budget number?
As for the community center and San Venture, it appears that we should be. Between those two line items, we should be coming in under that. Again, and there's a lot of bills that come in, utility bills are usually a couple months behind, so you're paying, when you pay in November, that's probably not for October or maybe even part of late September or something to that nature as well, too, so. It's good to have some cushion at December thirty-first because you need some time to account for those bills coming in after the first of the year as well, too. But if you look at the revenues on the community center, we surpassed our budget back in September. We're now at one-point-two million, and we budgeted just under one million dollars of revenue, so we'll have another whole month of revenue coming in in December here as well, too, so things are looking well there. And overall, both facilities from a revenue and expenditure standpoint are in a good financial position and are doing, are doing well in comparison to our budget, so. That's about all I have, if you've got any additional questions.
Questions of staff? Councillor Lehman?
Mayor, if I'm looking at the November year-to-date on the ICE Arena, and it was taking roughly a fifty-thousand-dollar loss, forty-nine-one-fifty-four, last year at this time, so this year at this time, it's eighty-one, eighty-one thousand loss, so it's, it's higher. Do we know why that happened?
Yep, that accounts for, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lehman, that's that billing to the high school for the first half ICE rental. We have sixty-two-thousand-five-hundred dollars of billing that occurred in November of seventeen, but didn't incur until December eighteen of this year, so. If we would have billed that a week earlier and showed up in the November financials for this year, that number would be reduced to, you know, approximately twenty thousand or just under twenty thousand dollars instead of the eighty-one.
I was looking at November's actual numbers of seventeen.
Yep. Yeah, so that's a forty, so November of seventeen, the forty-nine thousand dollars...
Look in the money, we, we had that money.
So, that's a loss at this point. At that point in time, it's forty-nine thousand dollars negative, because your expenditures are greater than your revenues. This year, it's eighty-one thousand dollars, so it's higher as of November thirtieth. But if we're comparing apples to apples, we don't have the school district billing in this year's apple cart.
Got it, okay.
We had it in last year's, but not this year's.
Had it last year.
So, and that's, will come in, that's not a variable, it's, it's just a timing difference on when that bill went out.
And then there's a follow-up on the community center portion. The revenue, eight-eighty-two, end of November of 2017, six-oh-three now, what accounts for the difference there of two-hundred-and-fifty, sixty thousand?
That's just increased revenue generation. I mean, you look at your, you look at your revenues, they're one-point-two million compared to six-hundred-and-forty thousand, so that's, that's doubling your revenues. Your expenditure is obviously higher, but you've been in full operation, the community center wasn't in full operation all of 2017, they only came fully online about the middle of the year in July-ish of that year, so. So, your expenditures aren't quite double of what your, they were at this point last year, so that's, that's a good thing.
Okay.
Other questions on the financial report? More questions? If not, Darren, thank you for your monthly update, we do appreciate it. Moving ahead then to ten-B one, Public Works organizational structure. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. While Steve gets up here, as you know, since I've been here, every time we've had someone come on board, we've given them an opportunity to look at the internal operations of their particular piece of the organization. When I came in here, I did the same thing overall, and Steve has spent the last year looking at the organization, and now is coming to you with his overall plan for how he wants to increase efficiencies in Public Works, and at this point, is providing a real plan to make that happen. It has the full support of staff, and sincerely appreciate him coming forward and bringing it to you.
Welcome, Steve.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm excited to be here tonight to talk about Public Works, I don't always get to do that. So, I wanted to give a little background on where we're at with our infrastructure in the city. I'm sure you know a lot of this, but it's important for me to identify the issues and the needs that we have, so you, so you know that we have a growing public infrastructure. Our population has, in the past five years, from, in 2013, it was about thirty-eight thousand, and 2018, right now, we're about forty-one thousand. So, with that, our, our infrastructure expands, more streets, et cetera, our workload increases with that. So, when does that workload increase to a point where we need to start adding staff? It's not always easy to determine exactly when that is. I don't want to fall behind, I want to stay, and I want to provide the, the expected service levels we have. So, that's what I, what I've been doing is evaluating where we're at, and I wanted to throw some numbers in front of you to help show you where we're at. So, and I should have, I'm looking here, I got to get coordinated here. All right, so, looking at maintaining our customer service levels and project delivery. All right, so, in the Streets and Utilities Division, we have Streets and Utilities Division, we have Parks, we have our fleet and Engineering, we'll just talk about those four general categories in Public Works. So, in Streets and Utilities, I'm comparing to 2013, that's five years, why... So in streets and utilities, I'm comparing to twenty thirteen, that's five years. Why twenty thirteen? Twenty thirteen is when we added, I think it was when we added a new streets maintenance operator and a new parks maintenance operator. So it's the last time we added two new staff into our streets and, and parks department. So, on the infrastructure end of it, when we look at the streets and utilities, we've been slowly increasing. And we hover around with the streets and trails and sanitary sewer, storm sewer. We've been hovering around about plus or minus a five percent increase in the last five years. So that, that's actually quite a bit. Five percent increase, that's anywhere from five, five to seven miles of roadways. We have about a hundred and sixty miles of roadways currently. I can tell you, working in other cities, we are pretty slim and trim. Come from, I worked in a city of a population of just right at thirty thousand, and we had about the same level of staff in that city. It's not always apples to apples, but when I compare apples to apples, we're, I thought we were slim and trim there. We're slimmer and trimmer here in our Public Works department.
We're just really good here.
Say again?
We're really good here.
And, and so why is that? A lot of reasons. We're, you know, we're a pretty, pretty growing community. We're not going to be able to stay as slim and trim as we are. But good staff, good systems. So when I look at the parks, there's something very notable here. We've had a big increase in the last five years in parks to the tune of about two hundred acres. If you look at some of the, some of the new parks that we have, it's about a twenty percent increase in, in some of our facilities, but some of the bigger parks, we have the dog park, Quarry Lake, which isn't yet complete, but we still have to maintain what is out there. We had a Huber Shelter that was built in twenty fourteen, and you can go down the list there.
Counselor Lewis?
What maintenance is done at the dog park? I've had complaints from people that say the grass is long, they take a little dog out there and they can't find their dog sometimes. I'm just passing it along. I'm not, I couldn't verify it.
All right, I'm gonna write down, need more staff for maintenance at the dog park.
I'm just asking.
You know, we have, we have trails out there, fences, and, and we do mow, not everything, obviously, but I'll, I'll dig into that and making sure that we are meeting expectations and, and beyond what we're looking here, looking at here, we are internally, Bill Egan out of our department is, is doing a, a relook at all of the assets that we have, and specific to your question, he is in a, on a map in every park in our streetscapin' areas. He is identifying all the assets, and then he's, he's actually going to show how often, in this case, how often we mow, exactly what areas we mow and how often we mow them. So it'll put you, the city administrator, myself, down to our seasonals on the same page of what the expectation are as far as when those areas are being mowed. So stay tuned. We'll be sharing those, those mapping with you, and, and then we can make adjustments on that as well. So, park infrastructure, a twenty percent increase, about two hundred acres more in five years. That is, that's pretty substantial. And in the engineering department, so we don't, we don't maintain and operate necessarily like the streets and parks do in engineering. So in, in streets and parks, when you get that infrastructure, you have to continue maintaining it. You generally increase in staff, and it's hard to decrease in staff because you, once you have those facilities, you have them. In engineering, a little different. When we have a lot of development, we have to support those projects. And once they're in, we have a lot more hills and valleys with our staffing and engineering. So right now, I can tell you we're, we're not at the peak yet, and we are, we're substantially increasing. So the table three I have on the top there, we generally collect two fees in engineering, grading permits. When they come to actually get a permit to go do a grading on a project, we collect that fee for the grading permit. We have a development engineering fee. That's a more substantial fee. When a developer comes in, we charge them about seven point five percent engineering fee on the construction cost of their site improvements, or their public infrastructure improvements. So for Canterbury, for example, the cost it takes to build Shenandoah, since the developer is doing that, we charge them seven and a half percent. So, in twenty seventeen, those fees for the engineering fees were about three hundred thousand. In twenty eighteen, they jumped up to four hundred eighty thousand. And in twenty nineteen, you can see we're over a million dollars that we expect in, in collecting engineering fees on those public infrastructure projects.
Counselor Lehman?
We're not just taking a seven and a half percent cut. We're actually taking that money to pay for a service that's then supplied to the project, like oversight, correct?
That is absolutely correct. That's what we have, that, we, we can't, that's correct. We shouldn't be taking mower and stuffing it in our pockets.
Right, the, the, the money that we're collecting is used to, to fund, to make sure, people that are going out to make sure that the pipe is pitched at a certain level, and it's deep enough, and it's filled in with the right stuff, and all that kind of thing.
Counselmember Lehman, that's, that's exactly, that's exactly right, so. So why is this number important to me? Because it tells me, I mean, that, that work is there, that work is coming, and I have to find a way to absorb that with our staff. We, because it takes that people power to deliver those projects. So that's what I, one of the big things I want to talk to you about tonight, that's probably one of the bigger focal points, is that, that gap from twenty, basically twenty seventeen and increase into twenty nineteen, how we're gonna deliver those projects. And then also, table four shows our capital improvement projects that you, that you are all well aware of, and that was basically approved on our budget tonight. You can see that we have, sometimes we, we go up and down depending on what the projects are. But with our CIP projects, going into twenty nineteen, on the top over on the right there, you can see where we, where we were hovering, anywhere from, from two and a half million up to ten million. But in twenty nineteen, we're expecting about twenty-five million dollars worth of CIP projects. So they are projects that that same engineering group has to deliver. So we have to come up with a scheme to deliver our CIP projects, as well as all of the developments that we have to work with all the developers and deliver. So this slide shows the staff that Public Works have had dating back to two thousand and six and twenty thirteen. So if you, why two thousand and six? Because that's when the recession started and development basically just stopped. But it was, I, I look at it plus or minus that right now, we're about at the two thousand and six levels in development, plus or minus, approximate. So, and in two thousand and six, out of all of Public Works, we had about thirty-six staff. In the engineering and admin department, we had eleven. So you can see in twenty thirteen, that went down. We, we just didn't have that development, so. The ups and downs with the engineering department, but in the other departments, you can see that, that they're pretty steady. Once we get that, once we get that infrastructure, those, those vehicles, we need to maintain it. But in engineering, specifically two thousand and six, they had eleven staff, went down to six. We've been slowly building that back up. In twenty eighteen, we have, we have nine. Twenty nineteen, I'm proposing to, to, to bring that to ten. And then if you look at the bottom half, you'll see, you know, so how have we been bridging the gap with all of the new infrastructure, mowing all these parks? You can kind of see we've been doing it with our seasonal staff. We've grown from in twenty thirteen, fifty-five seasonal and intern staff up to about sixty-seven. So they help us bridge that gap during the summer. So summary on our infrastructure. We have a pretty steady increase in the growth of, of our streets and utilities that go with it. We've had a pretty hefty increase in our parks. And with our developments and our CIP projects, we are having about four times amount of our developments, the value of our developments, and about four times the amount of CIP projects compared to some of these past years. So substantial increase. So how do we accommodate this growth in Public Works? That's what I want to talk to you tonight about. So it's, I come up with an implementation plan here. And ironically, we had a meeting with some of the Canterbury staff today, and we also got an, an email from one of our developers on the west end of town today. And I thought to myself, there's more coming than actually I'm showing on these slides, so I might be back to you in six months and saying, help me, I need more staff. But this is my plan to start twenty nineteen with. So right here, this is our current organization chart. It lists all the staff members that we have in Public Works and Engineering. And the next slide is going to be my proposed changes. So, if you can follow this, I'll just briefly, briefly go through, and I, or my pointer, is this gonna work for me? I think so. Laser pointer. That, yes, it shows up. So there is a senior technician. So this group right here, on the right side, is mainly our Public Works staff. And this group on the left is our engineering staff. So what we, what I'm proposing to do is, is, and this is actually how it used to be, this senior Public Works technician, he actually used to reside over in engineering. So I am proposing to bring that person, that position, back into engineering, and then divvy up some of the, some of the actual tasks. That position mainly does Gopher State One locating, the actual physical locating out in the field. He's the one that puts the flags and all the paint marks for the underground utilities. He does all of our right-of-way permitting, and he does the street maintenance contracts, the chip seal coating, crack sealing, striping, and then also our trail seal coating. So I'm gonna divvy those, those duties up. So we're gonna bring that position over here, and, but he's gonna, he's gonna hang on to that right-of-way permitting part of it. But the street maintenance contracts, they would be shifted to the street supervisor. And the trail maintenance contract item would be shifted to the park supervisor. And then the Gopher State One locating, I'm proposing to shift to the, the maintenance operators. That's typically where you'll, you'll traditionally see the Gopher State One locating occurring is, is via the maintenance operators. So out of all of this, I'm asking to add one position, and it would be in the actual streets department and the maintenance operators part of it. And then do some reorganization internally to bridge the gap and, and absorb some of those other duties that, that this one person was doing, so. He comes over into engineering department and will be, be working with the, with those, with the developments and with our CIP projects.
Counselor Lewis?
When you say the Gopher State One locating, do they make sure Gopher State One does the locating, or do they do, actually do the locating?
We, we do the locating. So we get a Gopher State One ticket. We get a call, and we have to go respond to that ticket and do, do the locating of the city utilities, so sanitary in our storm sewer for the most part.
Okay, so you're, you're, okay, you're not doing electric and everything else. You're just doing?
Yep, so electric is done by the, either Spuck or Excel Energy, and water is done by Spuck.
Yeah, Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Just to remind you that this position actually is already in our budget that we just approved. This was not a surprise. We had brought this before you as part of our workshop, just to remind you, so you understand that that piece of it is already taken care of. We just need to have you approve the actual moving of the positions as part of your roles and, as city council.
Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, I've actually got a couple of questions. So far, I'm good with what you're proposing. I just want to clarify, clarify and understand a couple of things. When you're, when you're talking about the maintenance supervisor for parks and streets, taking over the contract, contracting of street maintenance and trail maintenance, I'm assuming that this is new to them because they're taking it over from somebody else. Same with the locating to the operators. Somebody else did it, now the operators are gonna do it. Are we gonna train these folks on how to do this? I mean, some of them probably have done pieces of it before.
I'm right. Mayor and councilmembers, yeah, absolutely. We will train all our staff. So, so when I say, so the street maintenance contracts, it's, we have a joint powers agreement to go out with other communities and get a contractor to do our work. So our street supervisor will be managing that contract part of it. So that managing the contract part of it is new to him, but we'll still have Jim Henderson, who currently does it. He's still on staff. Myself, and we have, we have a lot of wealth of knowledge of, of managing these type of projects. So we're not gonna flounder. We're gonna make sure that we have enough overlap and our, our programs stay consistent. Jim, Jim will be training our Gopher State One locating staff, so we ensure we meet all the requirements and stay safe on that end of it. So, yep, we got some training to do.
And then, that's all fine. I just want to make sure that we're not, you know, that we're gonna do that. I, there's gonna be a little transition period until these folks are totally up to speed and comfortable with what they're doing, and, and that's, that's expected. The other question I had, Mayor, was under engineering and administration on, and that pages ain't numbered, so it's the first page right before your charts. It says, uh, "The change of right-of-way management is expected to reduce twenty-five percent to engineering reductions." The piece I'm really interested in is the last sentence, twenty-five percent for storm sewer and sanitary sewer would be, work shifted to the street utilities maintenance operators for a potential net savings, see above. So currently, a portion of that is charged back to the respected fund that is associated with it, so, you know, if you've got somebody out cleaning sewers, that time is charged to the sewer fund. Correct?
Um, yes, yes, it is.
So, if I'm reading what you're proposing, the sanitary sewer fund and the stormwater fund are both gonna be charged five thousand, one hundred dollars less because we're not billing it toward them funds?
Darren?
Mr. Mayor?
Maybe if?
That, that savings would be actually because the street maintenance operator is at a lower wage than the person that we currently have doing it. I'll, I'll be honest with you, the person that's doing it right now is, is typically, it's not that person doing it in cities, and, and so that's where that savings is coming from.
Okay.
A different person at a different salary, wage, doing that work.
Okay, so just, so I'm, I'm understanding. It's, whoever does that work is still gonna be billed back to the respective area, sewer, stormwater, whatever, correct?
Yep.
Okay. Yep.
Okay. Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, Steve, I know a few of these people personally, and I know their ages are getting up there, and I'm just wondering if we're doing anything to prepare for a few of these leaving. I know they're within a few years of probably calling it quits. And I'm just hoping that we're setting ourselves up that it'll be a nice flow into the next generation.
Um, yeah, I, I think me coming here, I, it's like deja vu from eight years ago when I took my prior job, every single one of my supervisors retired. Within like the first five years I was there, so I did this once already. So I, the good thing is, is, and, and that's part of why I wanna, that's exactly part of why I wanted, there's other changes here. I, I want to, by, I, I'm shifting a lot of this workload down to some of these people down here, and there's a reason for that. It's, it's about the mentorship and getting those younger staff ready to step up in some of these shoes that, that are inevitably are gonna retire. Definitely, we're not looking at forcing any of our, of our good staff out of here, but it's gonna happen. I'd probably say within the next year or two, we're gonna see a couple of these positions retire. I, I hope they stay around for, for years, but that's selfish, and, but I'm planning, and that's, that's part of this implementation plan is to address those issues.
Yeah. Counselor Lewis?
And I'm sure you understand the wealth of knowledge with the years and experience that these people have within our city. I mean, you ask them a question, they don't even have to go to a map. They can tell you off the top of their head, you know, where a utility is or whatever, and. off the top of their head, you know, where a utility is or whatever, and, you know, the experiences they've had with problems in that area.
Yep. Yep, and that's, that's another part is, is getting those systems in place that are in people's heads right now. So we are, mentioned about Bill, Bill Egan developing these asset management maps and plans. That's about, he's, he had, he, it's not that he doesn't have this stuff, but it's in his head. And I hope he doesn't retire anytime soon, but, but it's still, we're, we're picking away at these things to get a system on paper so it, it, so it, it lives, whatever they developed, it lives beyond them. So that's what we're working on.
That's what I was referring to. Most of these guys, it's all in their head, nothing on paper, and when they leave, it's gone.
Not everything, but we're, we're, you know, they, they got good systems, but we're making sure that we have a, a good, a good plan here as we go forward.
Thank you. All right.
Okay, so there, there's a couple of other little things here would be is, these two, the street supervisor and the park supervisor, we're looking at making them grade 170 to grade 180. Like, that, right now, they're non-exempt, they get paid overtime. This would bring them to salaried, so they don't get paid overtime. And then it would be relying on our foreman, as I just mentioned, to, to help them out. They're getting new tasks from, with the street maintenance contract, but, but we're gonna work with our, our foreman here too, and help them absorb that extra work. And that's, that's part of adding at the bottom here, to, to help with that work. Right across the middle here, we have a foreman, a foreman, and then we have a parks lead and a lead mechanic. So I'm looking at making them across-the-board foremen. So that is something that we will, we'll have to work with the union on as well. These two lead members are part of the union, so we'll have to follow that, that procedure on, on changing those positions and seeing where they fit in our organization. So up in the top right here, out of all of that, I'm asking to add one person for 2019. And again, with the side note that I might have to come back to you midstream in the year to, to absorb some, some work and potentially add additional staff, but only, only one person with all of this green on here. So the next page is, that's a 20, that's a 2019 organization chart without the green on it. The only thing that changes here is we add this position here, Streets Maintenance Operator, and we move Jim's position over here. And beyond that, it's, it's the same structure.
Counselor Lewis?
Steve, the foreman position, those are working foremen or are they strictly clerical?
They're working foremen.
Okay.
Yep, so right now, they're probably more working than supervisory. So I need to shift that balance a little bit more towards supervisory to, to absorb some of the, the management part of it that we're looking at.
Yeah, I've seen some of the guys out on the streets, and the ones you name here as foremen are right in there with the shovel or whatever. I like to see that. I think that gives them a little more knowledge of their people and the task at hand, and, you know, if they can't do it, then they shouldn't expect their people to do it.
Yep, and even, even a level above the foremans here, our, our supervisors are semi-working supervisors during the winter, most notably. When it, when it snows, they're in the plow. It's basically this entire Public Works Department is in plows in the winter. So they're...
Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, a few years back, we talked about, well, it might've been more than a few years ago, but when we first started with GIS, Judy Cox was here, we, we made the change, Lori, I think, was here at the time. And we talked then about having these, the ability to have layered maps, so you take your, your map of your sewers, could put it down, it's a, it's a clear document with the colored pipes on it, showing the city, and you could put your stormwater one over top and have these overlays and build where all your infrastructure is. You know, and we've been doing that for many years. You know, we, we transitioned to the police department, to the mobile data terminals and the cars. I totally agree, we need to be doing this with the park assets and a lot of our other infrastructure, sooner the better, so other departments can have quick access to it, even the public if they wanted to see it. So I, I think that's gonna be an important piece of this.
I mean, Mayor and council members, that, that's, you know, that technology, we use daily. Our GIS mapping, our staff uses that daily, those maps and in asset management that I was talking, that Bill's doing, that's exactly what that is. It's in our GIS. So that, that's, how, how have we only grown as little as we have? Part of it's technology. We were able to streamline things by using that technology. So we are, we're doing that daily, and we're actually gonna improve on some of our, our GIS applications that we're using too. So budget impacts, just in general, I have that up on the screen here, the general fund, by the proposal of, of adding one streets maintenance worker, this is what it would do to the budget, and how I shifted things around that I propose, it would increase a, a stress on the general fund by 27,500. The, as we talked, the sanitary and storm would actually go down. And the developer and engineering fees would absorb a, a big chunk of, it's not exactly the streets maintenance position, but by switching these around, you know, those, those costs of our street maintenance position for the Gopher State One locating and the other things are part of the general fund. But Jim's position is, would be shifted in funding, so that's why the developer and engineering fees would be paying for the majority of, of him shifting over in Engineering.
And it's also where we need the, the most help on your analysis, right?
Exactly it. And, you know, so on paper right here, I, I showed you where we're, we're, and engineering fees that we're taking in upwards of a million dollars, and I only have $79,000 here, so divide a million dollars by about 100,000 people, so I need 10 more people. And, and that's not too far from the truth. But how, how we're going to be doing that is, we're gonna be relying on the developers' consultant and engineering to, our, our inspectors are gonna be doing a higher level inspectors, and we're going to be feeding what they've traditionally been doing in the field, the nitty-gritty, every bit of the inspection, we're going to have the developers' inspectors, and we're gonna provide a higher level of oversight on those projects. So that, that's our, our plan with that. So, did I go two slides here? No. So 2019 and beyond, you know, we're, we're going to experience the, a lot of expansion and growth yet to come here. Again, those meetings this morning made me take a step back, and it's coming. So I will need to continually evaluate staffing needs. So things that we, beyond what I'm presenting you today, we have in the works, the parks' master plan is being done, and part of that is evaluating our parks staffing needs. So when that is done, we'll, we'll see what the consultant said about our parks and our staffing for that. I am also evaluating our fleet division and staff. I've developed, our staff have developed over the last six months to year, a monthly tracking with our fleet system, with our work orders, really neat little system here that we'll be rolling out, starting in 2019. So we'll be able to see, do we have enough mechanics, or are we outsourcing too much work? Is our, is our turnaround, our, our vehicle repairs growing longer? So we'll, we'll have some real good tracking, so more to come on evaluation of our fleet division staff. We only have, we only have three mechanics for all the equipment we have, and that's actually two and a half mechanics, because one of ours, he's a, he's a working lead that you saw there, so a working foreman. So that's pretty slim and trim. And then the last thing is, we probably need to migrate into some better emergency call system. Right now, we have one. It is called Dave Rutt, if you need something with streets, or call Jim Henderson if you need to have an emergency Gopher State One locate on the weekend, and, and that's about the system, or if you have a parks issue, call Bill. And that, that system doesn't work. We have to, we have to change. That works when you're a city of 5,000, but it doesn't when you're 40,000 and growing. So we're gonna be looking at a better emergency on-call system, so it, it's tough. Bill Reynolds called, "I need more traffic control downtown," for the parade the other week there. And it, without having an on-call system like that, it's, it's not even easy internally for Bill to find the right person to call after we've left already. So we, we have to develop something a little better there, especially with our sanitary sewer. So let me keep going here, I'll be talking all night. So the recommendations, I'm asking you to approve our, our Public Works organizational structure changes, the implementation plan to get there, and specifically to add one streets maintenance operation position to our, to our staff. So with that, I thank you.
Thank you.
Consideration.
Thanks, Steve. Further questions of staff? Further questions of staff? If not, thank you. Counselor Whiting?
I'll make a motion to approve the Public Works organizational structure changes, implementation plan, in addition to the streets maintenance operator.
Counselor Lehman?
Say it.
I have a motion and a second for their discussion. Counselor Whiting?
I'd just like to add, it looks like there's been a lot of work done using the tools we have, and bringing people up and giving them some more opportunities within our systems. So I thank you and appreciate all the work you've done on that.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yeah, and that's, that's important to note, Counselor Whiting, because as part of our succession plan, we want to cultivate those in our system, we want to give them more opportunities, we want to challenge them in a safe environment so they can work up in the ranks. And that's essentially what Steve is attempting to do in, in the department.
I'll tell you, Counselor Lewis, who are talking about the succession planning, you know, are we top-heavy? I agree, a lot of knowledge, institutional knowledge, get that stuff on paper, but are we building a, a team that's gonna grow up into the system? And I think that's vitally important. Counselor Mokel?
Yeah, I think that the strategic plan into how we, we develop that knowledge is important. I think it's also important to acknowledge that we took some outside fees we were paying in Engineering and bringing those back in where we have more control over that as well.
Counselor, Counselor Lewis?
I'd just like to thank Steve for all his hard work, and I think he's doing a great job. And I think the majority of his people really know what they're doing, and, you know, hopefully we can pass on all the knowledge and to the next generation, and we'll be a better city for that.
Motion on the table, and a second for their discussion? Discussion, discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion passes. Thank you all. Counselor Lehman?
Motion for a 10-minute recess.
Second. I have a motion and a second for a 10-minute recess. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, we stand adjourned for 10 minutes. Aye, those opposed, we stand adjourned for ten minutes.
I gotta cram them.
We'll reconvene this, uh, City of Shakopee City Council meeting for December eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen. We are on planning and development, ten C one, comprehensive plan amendment. Michael, welcome back. Good to see you. Happy holidays.
Mayor and council, uh, we're back here for comprehensive plan amendment for new mixed land use classification. This is kind of Plan B. Um, this would be, again, a ma- maximum allowed density in the city is twenty-eight units today. Um, lots downtown are unique, so the proposed would be creating a new downtown mixed-use land classification. Joe Whiting, who's been working on this, we are required by statute to notify the surrounding towns. Um, everyone's sent back comments that they're okay with this. Um, it would basically create a brand-new land use classification, and the only properties it would affect would be the current old City Hall site for the proposed development there, the Riverside Bluff Apartments, which is proposed, and then three existing buildings to bring them into compliance. It would also add into the table, if you remember, there is no, um, category for this, so we would create a new category in the land use table, and then this would be the changes on the map. So, this is the current comprehensive plan, um, showing those mixed-use parcels. This would be the new category. So here's City Hall, it would pick up River City Center, the two existing, um, senior projects, and then the new site for the gone companies. So those would be the changes. So staff's recommending that the City Council approve Resolution twenty eighteen one forty-six, a proposed comprehensive plan amendment for a text amendment to create a new downtown mixed-use land use classification and a map amendment to re-guide certain properties in downtown to this new classification and move its adoption.
Um, thank you. The, uh, Michael, so the verbiage compared to what we saw the last time is, is different, and then another, the other significant thing is dropping the parcels down to five, of which three are kinda non-conforming for the twenty-thirty plan that the Met Council would like us to do?
So, correct, Mayor. So Mayor and Council, for last time, I think it was Councilman Lehman or Lewis who brought up that couldn't we just do the parcels that are impacted today? And so in talking with, um, our council and with Scott County and the Met Council, they've agreed that we would just impact the properties that are non-compliance, which is River City Center, the two existing high-rises, and then the two new proposed projects that have been approved.
You took some parcels out.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Other questions of staff?
I have one.
Yep?
The, uh, said, uh, twenty-eight, your presentation said up to twenty-eight units. Our, our four, I believe, we directed and adopted was up to forty in the downtown and riverfront, and forty-two with the transit component?
Mayor and council, it's forty units is what the zoning is. The land use was never changed, and so the land use category is limited currently to twenty-eight. So if you remember, you can do whatever you want on the zoning side, but by statute it must meet the land use side. You did not amend the comprehensive plan to forty, so it's still at twenty-eight right now. If you talk to the Met Council, that is what you're limited to by the twenty-thirty plan. And that goes back to this table. So the table that you see before you was amended, um, for the R four to twenty-eight units, and so you've been approving those comprehensive plan amendments on a parcel-by-parcel basis. So when you did the R, the, um, Sand Company project-
South Bruce?
There, there was a comprehensive plan amendment for twenty-eight units and a rezoning to R four at, I think, not to exceed twenty-eight units on the-
So we did the, the comp plan for the zoning to go from commercial to R four, and then did another piece as well, right?
Mayor, that's correct, and you did the same thing on, um, the Sixten, which is next to Hy-Vee. That is capped at twenty-eight units, and the zoning for that, even though it's R four, is the same thing. You did the same thing a few meetings ago for the MWF project, 'cause that came in, I think, at twenty units an acre. So you rezoned that to R four, and we changed the comp plan to a higher density, but it's limited to whatever that project was. On Canterbury, if you remember, you amended that, and that again is capped at twenty-eight for forty-eight, forty acres.
Okay.
So, while you have a zoning category that allows up to forty, the current comp plan only allows up to twenty-eight. So what this basically is doing is creating a new land use category just on these highlighted purple properties to bring them in compliance with the twenty-thirty plan, and to allow those two new projects to move forward.
That's just crazy that the three of these parcels have been around for a long time, and then they, they don't match the twenty-thirty, and, uh, uh, this is a great opportunity, at least for those two, three, to bring them into compliance. Councillor Lewis?
Um, I'm just curious on the way this was brought back. Um, was this on a verbiage change that it came back, or was it requested to come back?
So, Mayor and Council, this is a completely different item. So we're now creating a new land use text, and we're creating a new land use category and putting the zoning into it. Before, we were taking what was currently mixed-use in the downtown, it had to be zoned B three, and it had to be, um, mixed juice, and I think there were nine or twelve properties that were in it. We've come back based on the feedback we had to narrow that significantly down to only touch the properties that are currently out of compliance and the two projects that we currently have.
And when we look at this proposal for this comp plan amendment, and help and follow the criteria here, and, you know, the comp, comp number four, comp plan requires a different provision, the comp plan for the downtown district requires an amended language, actually, which covers a couple of the parcels here. Um, and criteria number three, significant changes in development patterns have occurred, and especially in our downtown area that, that with the redevelopment has become more of a in-the-demand, um, aspect of that.
So, so Mayor and Council, this can only be used on the highlighted parcels that are in purple?
Only on those, okay. Other questions of staff? Other questions of staff? Seems cleaner this time, so.
Mayor, Mayor and Council, we heard you, so.
Okay. Other questions of staff? If not, thank you. Councillor Whiting?
I'd make a motion to approve Resolution R two zero one eight dash one four six, a resolution for a comprehensive plan amendment for a text amendment to the twenty-thirty comp plan and re-guiding certain properties within the downtown district for mixed-use to downtown mixed-use.
Second, second by Councillor Mokel. And this requires a supermajority. Think, uh, when we do these, we will, uh, we will have a roll call, so there's a motion on the table and a second for their discussion. Discussion, Councillor Lewis?
Yeah, I've got some points I'd like to make before we vote, and they don't really pertain to this, but, uh, I think they need to be said since this will be my last official meeting. Um, so, am I gonna get a chance to speak, or do you wanna cut me off?
Uh, a chance to speak on this issue that's-
I said it wasn't on this issue.
So you're tying two of those things together.
I'm trying to get a chance to rebut some accusations made against me some seven, eight months ago. I've tried numerous times and, uh, been, uh, cut off every time. So I would like a chance to, uh-
How does this, how do, how does this relate to the motion and second in front of us?
The way it relates, if you really wanna get blunt, is you need my vote, and if you don't get, give me a chance to rebut, you're not gonna get my vote.
Well, we don't horse-trade, Councillor, uh-
Yeah, we do. It's done at every level of government.
Okay.
So, you can do what you want.
All right. I think we should stick to the subject matter and-
Then stick to your subject matter and start your roll call on that end. You started on my end, the last one.
I will lead the meeting, Councillor.
No, I'm just telling you.
Great. Uh, further discussion on the matter in front of us? Further discussion? No, seeing no further discussion, by roll call, Councillor Lewis?
I abstain.
Well, it is abstained. Based off of what reason?
Then I give you a no.
Would it be appropriate to withdraw my motion and table this item till January eighth?
Won't do you any good. How does a supermajority play into a council that abstains, Mr. Thompson?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Counsel, the-
I changed my vote to no.
An abstention that would have the practical effect of a no vote, you're on it. You need, Mr. Mayor, you need-
Has to be a-
You need, you need four affirmative votes passed.
Right. I just wanted to make sure I knew that. All right. So, by roll call, Councillor Lewis, no?
I just said that.
All right. Councillor Lehman?
No.
Uh, Mayor Mars, no? Councillor Whiting?
Uh, aye.
Councillor Mokel?
Aye.
The motion fails, um, two to three. It was a positive motion, so it failed two to three. All right. Moving forward then?
If I may.
Councillor Lewis?
Am I able to bring that back immediately?
Uh, Miss, you mean, the, the vote that just happened?
Yes.
Yeah, you were on the prevailing side, so you can make a motion to reconsider.
I'd like to make a motion to reconsider. Um, motion on the table to reconsider?
Need a second, Mr. Mayor. You'll need a second.
I'll second that.
I have a motion to reconsider and a second. Further discussion on the reconsideration?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, just so I can clarify, the motion reconsideration just brings the matter back before you, you'll have to vote on it again.
But I have a, a motion to reconsider. I have to vote on that first.
That's correct. I just wanted to make sure.
Then we would put it back on the table.
That's correct.
It's like, yep, I got. So, discussion on the reconsideration. No further discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye, those opposed?
Aye.
Uh, motion to reconsider passes four to one. Now the comp plan is back before us. Councillor Lewis?
Yeah, I guess I just wanted to see how far you'd go to keep, uh, keep me quiet. I, uh, believe this project has worth. I have talked at length with, uh, a couple of the project developers, and, uh, you know, if you wanna take your vote, I'll vote yes for it, but, uh, it was, uh, my only chance to see if I could force you into giving me a rebuttal time, but obviously you're, uh, bound and determined, you're going to strangle me, so, you know, I can't take the, uh, the best things for the city. I have to think of those first before personal, um, criteria, so, um, take your vote.
Um-
If you're willing to, uh-
Do you wanna make that motion then? So, we voted on the reconsideration.
Yep.
The comp plan amendment's back in front of us, and so if you would like to make that motion, then we can get a second, then we can vote.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution R twenty eighteen dash one forty-six to, uh, go ahead with the text, or the comprehensive plan amendment.
I believe it's, uh, item one forty-nine, R two zero one eight one four nine.
No, that's the law.
One forty-six.
That's the law.
Oh, I'm on another. Okay, I'm sorry.
Yep, so there's a motion on the table.
Second.
I have a motion on the table. Um, further discussion, discussion, by roll call, Councillor Lewis?
Yes.
Councillor Lehman?
No.
Uh, Mayor Mars, yes. Councillor Whiting?
Yes.
Councillor Mokel?
Yes.
Uh, motion passes four to one. Thank you. Let's move ahead then to item ten C two, inter-fund resolution loan for the former City Hall. Michael, welcome back.
Mayor and Council, this is just on the council's side. You've already done on the EDA side, just approving the inter-fund loan, because the funds are actually coming from the city over to the EDA.
This is the same, same type of motion that we took in the EDA?
Yes, Mayor.
That's fine. Uh, questions of staff? Questions of staff? Councillor Mokel?
Make a motion to approve Resolution number R two zero one eight dash one four nine, amending and restating Resolution number seventy-nine twenty-one and authorizing an inter-fund loan for advance of certain costs in connection with the proposed tack or increment financing district.
I have a motion and a second by Councillor Whiting. Further discussion, discussion, discussion. Councillor Lewis?
Yeah, I guess my question would be that, being that the Fed is gonna raise their interest rate, I'm just curious if we couldn't get, uh, a little better deal than the three percent. Um, just, just asking, I'm not pushing, just, I figure, you know, if the Fed's gonna raise theirs, that's gonna make the banks raise theirs, so.
Well, this is on the loan portion of which you played a role, a positive role in this, and-
Mayor and Council, I think if, if you change the interest rate, which you're gonna do, I think the goal of this was to shrink down from twenty-five years to significantly less. If you raise the interest rate, we're just going back the other way.
Right, right. Councillor, Councillor Lehman?
Mayor, it might trigger, you'd have to go back and redo the developer's agreement too then.
Yeah.
Mayor and Council, Councilmember Lehman's correct, so we'd have to go back to the EDA, and you'd have to change all those documents.
All right. This is not I'd ask. Okay. So, motion on the table and a second for their discussion. Councillor Lewis?
Yeah, being that we're using this system on this one, um, I'd just like to make something for future. I think we could, uh, use this form when we get out to the Canterbury Commons bonding, because we, uh, we can save a lot of money without printing the bonds, cost of selling the bonds, all of that. We have the money in-house to do it, and the payback would, uh, cover any need.
So, I appreciate the effort that you put forward on this effort here for City Hall, Councillor Lewis. Um, it makes sense. It's also something that we can fund at a two-million-dollar level and, and carry that. But however, I believe that Canterbury is a several times larger, and that would put a tremendous strain on the city's finances at that level.
No, it's less than six times the, the amount, and-
No, I like that the years come down too, but the, the amount of exposure and liquidity for the city would be too immense.
Well, I'm just-
On that size of deal.
Yeah, I'm just looking at our fiduciary responsibility to the citizens. We should get as much as we can.
Appreciate that. Um, further discussion, 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 all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one. Thank you. Item number eleven A, city bill list is in front, in front of us for our review, no action necessary. Uh, liaison report, Councillor Lehman?
I attended the last school board meeting, I think it was, uh, tenth? I think it was on the tenth. Got it in my truck. I'll have to, uh, get it to Mr. Reynolds to share with you. Basically, they had, they adopted their budget- Basically, they had, they adopted their budget, went over their budget, and set out, said their farewells to those departing board members, and other stuff was routine. So I'll share that budget document with staff to get out to everybody.
All right. On December 11th, I met with Counselor Elek Kondraas. Good conversation. On the 12th, I met with our, the Shockley Minnewakken Sioux Community Chair, and really that meeting was designed to actually thank them for their partnerships and various efforts with the city over the last year or so. Pretty good meeting. Also, we did look at, talk about some future items. Met with all the mayors of Scott County on the 13th. You know, the issues of Shockley, Pirate Lake, or Savage, or Bell Plain, or Jordan, or within their communities, the mayors are, the, the issues are about the same. Housing, traffic, how do you get businesses to come to your community? The, I, I think there's a lot of commonality in the issues that face communities regardless of size. Last Friday, I attended the city employee breakfast. I thought the turnout was excellent. Great event. We have some really good employees here that work, work on behalf of our residents. And the other day, I attended Tammy Vidmar's retirement effort and 32 years of, with the city, and she's played an important role over the years in our community, and I'm thankful for her service. That's all I have. Counselor Whiting?
I have no liaison reports. I did attend the employee holiday breakfast. There was some great food and a lot of great employees, one bad sweater.
It showed up in pictures, too.
Did we vote on that?
I think we should. But that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Counselor Mokel?
I also went to the breakfast on Friday, and then on Saturday, I actually went to the Rees Across America out at Fort Snelling. So it was kind of a cool event to go to.
Thank you. Our administration report?
The only thing I have to add, Mr. Mayor and members of council, obviously, Tammy retiring is a big deal. We were, last night, were able to send her off in style. And my congratulations once again to Keith Rains, who was our Employee of the Year for 2018. Well-deserved, as well as Melissa Schlingman, who was our Manager of the Year. Melissa does all of the work that Darren comes and tells you about in regards to numbers. Melissa is the one that's taking care of all those numbers. And, you know, both, it's really great. This is our first year to have that program in place. I'm delighted that it's actually in place now, and I'm looking forward to announcing more of those into the future.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Item number 12, Mr. Lehman?
Well, thank you, Mayor. Reading my mind again, I told you, I thought you said you wouldn't do that no more. I would like to take this opportunity to, to thank those that are departing this council for their service to our community. And I'd also like to thank those that are continuing and those that are joining us, staff also, for the time and effort that they put into our community. Just because individuals don't agree on policy or processes or some procedures doesn't mean individuals have to take it personal and, and, and. So I just wanted to tell them, you know, thank you for your services. The job, elected position comes with challenges. Sometimes those challenges are not due to our own doings, yet they fall on us to deal with the situation. So, thank you for your service to your community. It's appreciated. You've done good things. And last, Mayor, I'd like to say to our community, our staff, Merry Christmas, season's greetings, happy holidays, happy new year.
Counselor Luce?
Like to make a motion to adjourn to January 8, 2019, 7:00 PM.
Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, I'd like to second it with a friendly amendment.
Yes?
The proper motion would be motion to adjourn, signee die. And what that means in Robert's rules is that this is the last time this body will meet in this capacity.
I'm good with that.
Very good. Before we vote, I want to thank Counselor Luce for his efforts on the City Council and Counselor Mokel. I also want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to all, and peace on earth. Here's, Counselor Whiting?
I'd like to also add thanks to Counselor Luce and Counselor Mokel for being part of this group, and these bodies change over the years, but I think Frank said it best, you know, with some of your decisions, you make some people happy and as many people manage it. So it's hard work, but we appreciate all you've done. Thank you.
Motion on the table and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. We are adjourned at 9:14.